Good morning, folks. Happy to see we have such a good turnout today. Thank you all for coming. We will convene the Fayette County Commissioners Meeting Tuesday, March 19th at 10:03 a.m. Please stand for prayer and name stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Surely pray. Father, we come before you in Jesus' name. We thank you, Father, for our county. We thank you, Lord, for giving us such a beautiful county to live in. And, Lord, we thank you that you have blessed us. And, Father, we ask now that you'd bless this meeting, that you'd guide our representatives here into wisdom. And, Lord, we pray that peace would fall upon us, especially during this time of year, Lord, as we remember what our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, did for us. They died, was buried, and rose again for us. In Jesus' precious, holy name. And all God's people said?
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to divide the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a few amendments to the agenda today. The first one, I would like to amend under Act 13 Resolutions, I'd like to change the word "reserve" to "outlet," under capital "reserve" to capital "outlet." The other ones are, under the courts, consider approval to advertise to seek proposals for buildings for lease. And it says in the peripolis area, but I'd like to, I'd like to change that a bit if I could, Tammy, just to reflect an area to be chosen, because I don't want to restrict the proposals. And the other thing is, you know, there's two items that we have to kind of look at here. One is the geographical, reasonably the center of the geographic area. And the other thing is, I think we need to look at the population density of that region also. I mean, you know, just those two things in combination. And, you know, for consideration for the Magisterial District Court, 14-3-04 and 14-3-06, the building must be ready to be opened by January 1st, 2014.
So what you're saying, if I may, Commissioners, you want to just remove the area that's cited and open it for proposals for potential properties that rest within, this will be a consolidated district, is that correct, Tammy?
That is correct. But I'd also, if you, I would like Periopolis in there, if not, maybe include Periopolis in the surrounding areas, only because Periopolis is more centrally located between the vast districts that we're combining. And with the routing and different things like that, we have to consider the transportation and things with how people are going to get to the office, directions and things like that. So I don't mind looking at the outskirts of Periopolis, but I would like it to be more centrally located, or at least close to that area, for many different reasons. And then also, I'd like to amend it too, to also, to where it has either the proposal for the building for lease and/or building to spec, because if somebody would be willing to build me a building, then I would be more than willing to listen to that also.
So building to spec.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the, if these were spec, so the item would be to seek proposals for buildings for lease or buildings to spec, for spec in the consolidated Magisterial Districts 14-3-04, 14-3-06, and the building must be ready to open by 1/1/2014.
Correct.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other-
Commissioner, I'm sorry, was that what you-
Yeah, that's, that's fine. And then the other one is for consider approval resolution to designate signature authority for the Weaver Mill Bridge project between the county and the state.
Is there any comment?
Art, could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
The county has been working to replace the Weaver Mill Grove Bridge number 95 over George's Creek. And this project is part of the Transportation Improvement Plan for 2013. It's federal dollars from the Federal Highway Administration. And at this time, Attorney Hyde is reviewing the document, the agreement, which is between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the county.
Okay.
It's an 80-20 split.
Okay, thank you. Can I make a motion to amend any items that were just read?
Okay. Second, all those in favor, motion carries.
Oh, is there any public comment?
Okay. Are there, is there any public comment on any of the agenda items at this time?
This has not, this has nothing to do with the agenda, but would you mind moving the flag to its proper position? It should be at the end.
I don't know, a second. Yes, ma'am.
I represent the Fayette County Library Assistant. My name is Gina, what do you know? I'm the president of that organization. We continue to provide free library service through the nine public libraries in Fayette County. That includes Bryan Street, Bryan Field in Dawson, the Carnegie Library in Connelsville, the Dunbar Library, the German Mason Town Library, the Frazier Library in Periopolis, and the Point Marion Library, the Republic Library, and the Smithfield Library. All of these libraries are staffed with ambitious people that are trying to raise the standards in Fayette County and to help their citizens prepare for the challenges in today's world. Unfortunately, one of our libraries had water damage recently. That was the Dunbar Library, and you may have heard it was closed for a short time. It became necessary to replace the floor in one room, so they moved the bookcases to another room, but they were not secured by, against the wall, so the library board very wisely chose to close the library for that period to avoid any injuries to the patrons. But I'd like to give you some examples, some wonderful services that are being provided in our libraries. First of all, the Carnegie Library in Connelsville is one that, through great effort, along with the city of Connelsville, has recently secured a grant, and they've provided matching funds in order to make some renovations to that very old building that dates back to the days of Andrew Carnegie, a magnificent building that needs some renovation. So they are going to be making repairs to the roof and the floor indoors and installing some new windows.
Yeah, they were doing that through the Energy Efficiency Grant, they secured money. We were working on that, so we're aware of that.
Good, all right. And then the Carnegie Library, along with the German Mason Town Library, is now offering GED classes. And that's significant because it will help adults complete their high school education and acquire a diploma, which of course will help them to have a better promise in the future. Then the Frazier Library makes, takes advantage of being a combined school and community library, and they're able to use the resources and the library space when classes are not in session, so that they can make the most of that. Then the summer reading programs are about to start, and our librarians are busy with that. And they arrange books in age-related groups and make it fun by having other activities and contests. And one of the children that is a product of the Smithfield Summer Reading Program is a role model to the younger children. She's a middle school student who has authored her own book and had it published last year, just completed her second one, and is now writing her third book in that three-book trilogy. So she is certainly a role model for others. So you see that our librarians are doing what they can to meet the needs of the people in this county of all ages, from the preschool children in the Imagination Library to the Book Club for Adults, known as our Reading Circle. So we hope that you will continue to recognize the libraries as assets to the county as we work to improve the lives of the residents of Fayette County.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other agenda items, comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go right to the proclamations. And in fact, Marilyn, if you could come up, please. We have a-
May I ask our library representatives to also come up?
Absolutely.
... library leaders from Smithfield, Carnegie, and German Mason Town to our-
Well, thank you all for coming. Yes, it would certainly be my pleasure today to read the National Library Week 2013 proclamation. Whereas libraries are at the heart of their communities, campuses, and schools; whereas librarians work to meet the changing needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of library walls; whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community and address local issues; whereas librarians are trained, tech-savvy professionals, providing technology training and access to downloadable content like eBooks. Excuse me. Whereas libraries offer programs to meet community needs, providing residents with resume-writing classes, 24/7 homework, help, and financial planning services to teens applying for student loans, to older adults planning their retirement. Librarians continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. Whereas librarians, or libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the county commissioners for Fayette County, proclaim National Library Week, April 14th through 20th, 2013. We encourage all residents to visit a library this week to take advantage of the wonderful library, library resources available at your library.
Thank you. Congratulations to-
I hope you'll visit our libraries. If not, if you're not able to do that in National Library, we, there's going to be an open house for that Dunbar Library after their repairs are completed. And the Carnegie Library will be observing and celebrating its 110th anniversary. Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Sure. My name is Casey. I'm the director of the Carnegie Free Library. Everyone is welcome on Sunday, May the 5th, to our 110th birthday bash, and we're going to have from 12 to 6 in open house, and we should have lots of refreshments and a lot of fun. So come. And it's free. We're the largest free library in Fayette County, and as long as you have your identification, you can get a library card at our library.
I'm Amy Ryan with the German Mason Town Public Library.
Jean Kennedy Smithfield Public Library. And our library membership is free.
Thank you very much.
The next proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Is there anyone here? Tammy? Gina, Tammy's over there. Commissioner, you want to read it?
No, go ahead.
Child Abuse and Prevention Month, April 2013. Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. And the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive, supportive community. And all citizens should become involved in supporting families and raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment. And affecting child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among families, social services, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business, business community. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and neglect and strengthening the communities in which we live in. Signed by the Fayette County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Would you have a few words that you'd like-
I, I do, thank you. April, in conjunction with Crime Victim Center and Children Use Services, it, we're trying to raise information to the community on child abuse prevention, sexual assault awareness, and victims' rights. We will be holding a rally on April 12th that will be held at Penn State Fayette Campus. In addition to the rally, we will have an educational program to talk about how the community can be more involved and help prevent these serious crimes from occurring, and what you can do as far as reporting. So we would encourage the community to come out on April 12th. That'll be from 10 to 2 at Penn State Fayette Campus at the Williams Building. In addition, on April 18th, we will be awarding the Compassionate Educator Award, which is the first time this year, that will be held at the Cabaret at 6:00 p.m. And anybody wishing to come to that can RSVP to Children Use Services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. The next proclamation is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2013. Is there anybody here associated with that? Hi, your name?
Laurie Chapel from Crime Victim Center.
Hey, good, thank you. How are you?
Fine, how are you?
Thanks.
It's time to speak up. Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of Fayette County. Whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women will have experienced sexual assault by the time they complete college. And whereas, we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors. And whereas, staff and volunteers of anti-violence programs in Fayette County encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small. And whereas, with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in Fayette County through prevention education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators to their, to commit the acts of violence responsible for their actions. Whereas Fayette County strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Again, signed by the county commissioners of Fayette County.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Just invite everybody out, like Gina was saying, just to promote awareness of sexual assault and Child Abuse Awareness Month, and we hope to see everyone there.
And I think this one falls, the crime victims, it falls under the same category.
Okay, is there anybody here from, with this? Gina? Again, this, this is the proclamation, proclamation for Crime Victims Rights Awareness Month, April 2013. Whereas more than 33 million Americans are victims of crime each year. Whereas victims may suffer emotional, physical, psychological, and financial harm as a result of crime. The Victims of Crime Act, the VOCA, passed by Congress in 1984, affirmed a national commitment to help victims rebuild their lives by establishing the Crime Victims Fund, a major source of funding for services and compensation to victims of crime throughout the United States. Whereas the Crime Victims Fund provides support to states for victim assistance and victim compensation programs, as well as support for federal victims of crime, child abuse prosecution, emergency reserve to assist victims of terrorism, and training and technical assistance for the victim services field. Whereas the Crime Victims Fund supports more than 4,400 state and local victim assistance programs, including rape crisis centers, victim assistance in law enforcement prosecutor offices, and other direct services provided that help millions of victims each year. Whereas the Crime Victims Center of Fayette County is joining forces with the Victim Services Program, criminal justice offices, and concerned citizens throughout Fayette County and America to observe the 27th anniversary of VOCA during National Crime Victims Rights Month. And again, signed by all county commissioners.
Thank you both very much. Would you be all right if we got a picture?
Sure, sure.
I'm going to thank our Congress because they recently passed the-
Violence against women.
Violence against women's, women's act.
Absolutely.
Which took a while.
Not soon.
Thank you both, again.
Thank you.
One more. Is there anyone representing the autism from behavioral health? Without anyone representing that? Autism Awareness Month. Currently in the United States, approximately one in every 88 children are living with some form of autism spectrum disorder. Now, mind you, this is one, it was one out of 150 just a few years ago. And autism is a group of developmental disabilities characterized by atypical development, socialization, communication, and behavior. And autism can be accompanied by abnormalities in cognitive functioning, learning, attention, and sensory processing. And scientists are unable to determine the exact cause of autism, but research shows that both genes and environment play an important role, and the symptoms of autism spectrum disorders typically are present before age three, and there is no medical detection for autism. And even though the symptoms of autism spectrum disorders appear before age three, the average age of the diagnosis in the United States remains at approximately five years of age. Thereby, the Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2013 to be Autism Awareness Month in Fayette County, and does so in effort to help others understand and accept individuals with autism, and decrease the age of early diagnosis. And it is also signed by the Fayette County Board of Commissioners. And as a side note, Fayette County does have a facility at Highlands Hospital that is designed for early diagnosis and early treatment. It works in conjunction with Cleveland Clinic, and we should be proud to have such a facility in Fayette County. I make a motion to accept all the proclamations.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the Assessment Office. Consider approval of the following for a real estate tax exemption, as he has been deemed 100% disabled veteran by the Veterans Administration of Pennsylvania effective for the 2013 tax year. Individual was Warren C. Morris, 101 Spring Avenue, Mason Town.
Make the motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval to send six assessors for three hours of continuing education classes on April 12th, 2013, at $10 per person. Class to be held at, per person, to your own Somerset.
Move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval for Chief Assessor William Lukas to attend the Assessors Association of Pennsylvania Annual Spring Conference on April 24th through 26th, 2013, at Seven Springs. The registration cost is $400, which covers class fees and meals.
Move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval for Assessor Candace McHale to attend Assessors Association of Pennsylvania Annual Awards Banquet on April 25th, 2013, at Seven Springs. Candace McHale is eligible to receive the Governor's Award for 30 years of service to county government as an assessor. Cost of the banquet ticket is $52.
Move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I'd like to congratulate Candace for her 30 years of service to this county. Item number six, Behavioral Health Administration. Consider approval of the following agreements and modifications.
Make the motion.
For those in favor, aye. Motion carries. Children and Youth Services. Consider approval of the fiscal year 2011-12 purchase of service agreement between the county of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services and Fayette County Juvenile Probation Office and Vision Quest National LTD for residential providers, including group homes, on an as-needed basis. The rates are as follows.
Make the motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval of the fiscal year 2011-12 purchase of service agreement between the county of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services and Fayette County Juvenile Probation Office and Aberly for residential providers, including group home settings on an as-needed basis. Read this list.
Move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight, Controller Financial Condition Report.
Commissioners, for your approval dated this 19th of March, 2013, in our United Bank checking account, we have $1,314,159.97. Monies that are owed to the general fund listed on the agenda include $1,440,000. Arc payments to, due as listed, include $454,216.97. Central service payments, as listed on the agenda, amounts of $78,686. Funds that our general fund owes in the form of a tax anticipation note is $5 million. To date, our budget net position is a negative $1,712,937.06. In our net, in our total 2013 revenues, we have $2,117,960.39. To date, our total expenditures in 2013 have been $4,777,152.65. Expenditures that are being paid in this fiscal year from last are $976,334.24. In our capital reserve fund balance, we have $33,555.47. And in our bond fund balance, we have $306,970.11.
Thank you. Any questions on the-
No, thank you, Mr. Participation.
Thank you. Item number nine, Emergency Management Agency. Consider approval for Guy Napolillo, 911, Coordinator 210 Training, as part of the Region 13 Health and Medical Committee, April 14th through 20th, at the Center for Domestic Preparedness in Hanniston, Alabama, at no cost to the county.
Move.
Second, all those in favor?
Mr. Napolillo was selected by Region 13 to attend this, so well, well done, I mean, he's very highly regarded within that program.
Consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between Fayette County Emergency Management Agency, 911, and the PA 211 Southwest.
I'll make the motion, and for those that are not aware of what 211 is, and if you were calling and you got a fire, you would dial 911. If you were calling, asking for social services- If you were calling, asking for social service programs, homeless, maybe your heating oil was low, you would dial this 211 program, and it is all interconnected. So, it's a wonderful way of somebody reaching somebody on the social service side. So, make the motion.
Second, all those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. I agree, the 211 system, I attended a little seminar about a month ago about that, and there's, you know, really a wealth of information. In fact, the, the, this service has actually been in effect in Fayette County for about a year and a half. So, and it's building, it's, has a lot more information. I mean, you know, if you wanted the information about how to, for example, you know, who to contact about the Lihe program, or any other energy support, or, as Commissioners Apotowski indicated, all various types of social services, that's the place to call. And it, it helps alleviate the, the burden, or the, I'll say, missed calls to, to our 911 system. So, it's, it's very effective. You can, the 201 folks will get you directly in contact with who you need. So, it's, it really, they're, they're very efficient, and it will help you get to the services you need more directly than calling other, other places. So, I applaud that service, and I'm glad to see it's growing in Fayette County. Consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Fayette County Emergency Management 911 and the Western Pennsylvania region of the American Red Cross Southwestern Fayette Chapter.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Human Resources Department. Consider ratifying the transfer of full-time 911 dispatcher Amanda Pirono to program manager of the Supervised Visitation/Safe Exchange Program at the annual rate of $33,592, effective March 11, 2013.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving Tammy Boyle, Kristy Spiker, and Amy Reback to attend the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors Intermediate Accounting Training Program on May 22, 2013, at the Ramada Conference at State College. The registration fee, which includes tuition, materials, continental breakfast, lunch, for $80 a person, the cost for the overnight stay on May 21, the total cost is $96.32. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider ratifying the transfer of full-time bus driver Letitia Horry to a part-time bus driver per, per her request, effective March 5, 2013.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider ratifying the promotion of part-time bus driver Donald Gallagher to a full-time bus driver at SEIU, pay grade seven, step A, 11:40 an hour, effective March 5, 2013. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider ratifying the resignation of full-time bus driver Janine Troychak, effective March 8, 2013.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the hire of Bonnie Durstein to a full-time bus driver at SEIU, pay grade seven, step A, 11:40 an hour, effective March 20, 2013.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the hire of Melvin DeWitt as a full-time bus driver at SEIU, pay grade seven, step A, 11:40, effective March 20, 2013. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under the Fayette County Behavioral Health Agency, consider ratifying, excuse me, the designation due to retirement of caseworker to Cheryl Crynek, effective March 1, 2013.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider ratifying the resignation of Mental Retardation Program Specialist One Dana Cinch, effective March 1, 2013.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the promotion of caseworker supervisor Holly D'Mayo Act to a Mental Retardation Program Specialist One at the FCPHA, pay scale rate of $20.16 an hour, effective March 20, 2013.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Human Resources, consider approving an update to County Policy 6.2, travel and business expenses as it pertains to automobile mileage and mill reimbursement.
Make the motion.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Veterans Affairs, consider ratifying the resignation of full-time van driver Willis Smith, effective February 13, 2013.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Office of Human and Community Services, consider approval of software maintenance agreement with outline systems for $985.
Make the motion.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider advertising an RFQ for transportation services for fiscal year 2013, 2014, and for fiscal year 2014 and 2015.
And that would include, include the fixed route program, as well as the shared ride program. I'll second the motion. Make the motion.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Planning and Zoning, consider renewing agreements with falling contractors for professional services related to planning and zoning. Those include Beaver Creek Land Services, Arkleusburg, K2 Engineering in Uniontown, Lennon Smith, Sorlet, Coriopolis, Slater Engineering, Lee Mont Furness, and Groom Surveying in Uniontown.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider RZ 12-13 Hawkwood Development, North Union Township requesting a change of zone from B1, general business, to M1, light industrial.
I'll make the motion to accept the request, so I'll make the motion to approve the request from B1, general business, to M1, light industrial.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider RZ 12-14 Borough, Brownsville, Luzerne Township requesting a change of zone from C1, conservation, to A1, agricultural rural.
This project is designed to do surface mining on what is now the Patsy Hillman Park. It's a great project. The proceeds will go directly to enhancement and improvement of the park. The request here is not made for land that's going to be used for surface mining, however, land to have the equipment in place so they can do the project. So, I support the approval of, of the request from C, from C1, conservation, to A1, agricultural rural.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13, Public Works. Consider advertising for bids for X-ray security scan for the courthouse. The bids will be, will include the unit to be delivered, installed, and for onsite startup operator training, up to four hours for a minimum of two operators, and a five-year warranty for maintenance and the certification of the equipment.
Also, want to thank the courts for its willingness to assist with the project. Make the motion.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14, under Commissioners, consider ratification of the following transfers as listed, for a total of $57,980.07. Credits the same.
Make the motion.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval for the February 19, 2013 Regular Commissioner Meeting Minutes.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval for a corrective resolution concerning compensation of tax collectors.
Does anybody have a copy? That I left mine in my office, so we can read that.
Aye.
Oh, you had it, you had it.
You have this, yeah. This is the one.
Well, that's the one, but as I indicated to Mr. Cupp, there were--
Some questions on it? Then we're going to have to read.
This is the final question?
That's this information that I have.
Yeah, folks, what, what this involves is, there was a, and I'll just read the resolution. It was, it was, there was a resolution made back in December, Friday, December 10, 2004, and the resolution reads, moved by Commissioner Zimmerling, seconded by Commissioner Hardy, changing the method of compensation for county tax collection from a 3.5% commission to a flat rate of $1.50 per tax bill issued, and a flat rate of 15 cents per capita tax bill issued. Apparently, that's vague enough where there was a number of misunderstandings over the years, and we have tax collectors using different procedures to bill the county, so, and assuming different things. So, what we need to do, and I'm sure we're going to table this, because we have to look at that, and look, look at the language to make that more clear, and, and to review with the tax collector population, so, you know, the tax collectors, so everybody understands exactly what can and cannot be billed to the county. So, I--
Make the motion to table.
Second, all those in favor. Under Board Appointments, consider rescinding the appointment of Don Bowser to a public, as a public representative to the Fayette County Conservation District for a four-year term to expire the first Monday of January 2016. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Consider rescinding Resolution 13-01-15-44 regarding the appointment of Brian Butler as farm representative to the Fayette County Conservation District for a four-year term to expire December 31, 2016.
Move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to appoint Don Bowser to a farm representative to the Fayette County Conservation, Conservation District for a four-year term to expire December 31, 2016.
Again, these boards, just as a supportive question, he's going to be appointed as a public representative and a farm representative?
No, farm representative. Last month, there wasn't actually an opening for public representatives, so this is to clean that up, so he will be the farm representative.
Okay, well, the motion we passed above that, it had him as a public representative.
That's why it was rescinded.
It was rescinded. Okay, okay, so he's now the farmer, he's the farmer representative?
Yes, and that board's full and complete.
Okay, they now have a full, okay, very good.
Okay, and we'll, we'll go to the amended list here. Under Courts, consider approval to advertise the seek proposals for buildings for lease and/or build to spec in the Coriopolis and surrounding area for the consolidation of Magisterial District Courts 14-3-4 and 14-3-06. The building must be ready to open by January 1, 2014.
I'll make the motion.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Planning and Zoning, consider approval of a resolution to designate signature authority for the Weaver Mill Bridge Project between the county and the state.
Make the motion.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Act 13 Resolution, consider approval of a resolution utilizing $379,705 in 2012 Act 13 money, as authorized under Act 13. Page 30, line 20, number 11, for deposit into the county capital outlay fund if the funds are, are used solely for the purpose set forth in this section.
Is, again, a point of reference, we've amended, there was an amendment offered early in this meeting to remove the language citing capital reserve, and to put it into an open fund. A capital reserve fund would have froze the money only for capital projects. I know this has been a subject of, of great conversation. I've, I have developed, what I feel is, you know, I know everybody wants more, there were other groups that had requested funding. The county, of course, has to utilize the funding. I've set forth a proposal that I'd like to present to the board for approval or discussion. It would read as follows. The townships would receive, and this is out of 2013, 2013 Act 13 funds, the county-- Oops, sir.
I don't mean to interrupt, but could we finish the, you know, do the motion on, on this first, and then, and then we'll go to this?
Oh, that's fine.
Because I think that it fits nicely together, and I think Commissioner Sabatowski did a fantastic job in coming up with this alternative motion, and I, and we could review that after.
All right, that's fine. I'll make a motion that we, as the amendment read, have the 13 monies available for dispersal, dispersment.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, again, apologize for interrupting, but--
No, 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 no.
The, the distribution of the, of county Act 13 funds to county entities, Commissioner Sabatowski came up with a, with a plan that I think is very workable, I think is going to be very agreeable to everybody, and I'll let him go ahead and explain that. Now, this will actually involve more money than what was proposed last month.
Again, I don't, I wish I could say that would be agreeable by all parties, but I doubt that would be the case, but, again, I feel that it has some, some equity, it's shared. Understanding that this law was passed by the Pennsylvania Legislature, not by the three Board of Commissioners, the counties do have costs that we are incurring, and a result, and a result of state cuts, but also cost in general with our bridge maintenance, et cetera. And there were other groups requesting funds, and not all the impacts are necessarily negative impacts. There are some impacts that, that are positive in nature. So, as an item for a discussion or approval, I have it broken down where the townships would receive 10% of the 2013 Act 13 monies. The Fayette County Volunteer Fire Departments would receive 4% of the Act 2013, Act 13 funds. The Fayette County Airport would receive 4% of the Act 13, the Act 13 2013 funds. The Fayette County Chamber of Commerce, which is a countywide chamber, would receive 2% of the Act 13 2013 funds. The Conneville Chamber of Commerce would receive 1% of the Act 13 2013 funds. The Fayette County Redevelopment Authority would receive 3% of the Act 13 2013 funds. And the only social service that I've listed is the Fayette County Community Action would receive 1% of the Act 13 2013 funds. This is estimated on $1,450,000 in Act 13 funds, estimated, again, for 2013, so there would be a 25% share with these agencies. The county would maintain 75%. The total cost of the 25% would be $362,500. Again, other organizations were requesting funds. I believe that the fire departments are something that we definitely need to pay more attention to, and they desperately could use any help they can get, and this is an opportunity to assist them. Again, this would be only for 2013 to see how the process works, and if it works effectively, then obviously we can just continue with it, add more, whatever the case may be. If there are wrinkles and it's not working effectively, then again, we can come back and revisit this and amend this so that, you know, we can correct any errors along the way. But all of the organizations receive a portion of this. I know that the supervisor and the townships had wanted more. Please understand that they're receiving over $2.4 million, and as you break it down, I mean, I realize that some of them have increased amounts, some of them less, but I thought this would be a fair distribution while not forgetting those volunteer men and women that anytime, day or night, respond to a fire or an accident on the roads or an injury in one of our recreational facilities. And I know that every dollar they could receive, in addition to the dollars they work so hard to acquire through hoagie sales, through bingos, and those funds are starting to dry up more and more, along with a lot of their state and federal funding, and I felt that our fire departments deserve something. And I wish we could do more for them, to be quite honest with you. But, you know, the county does have obligations, financial in nature, our bridge repair, the estimates on that is just mind-boggling.
If I could state that?
Oh, please, if you have it.
You know, we have, we have a county bridge assessment report, anybody's welcome to look at it, so basically, we have it broken down into four categories. Category one is bridges that are currently out of service because of degradation. And those bridges that are currently out of service, it would cost $1,550,000 to put them back into service. Category two is the county bridges that currently have weight restrictions on them. In order to remove those weight restrictions, we have many bridges with weight restrictions, it would cost $12,480,000 to repair those bridges. Category three are bridges with no weight restrictions but are deteriorated to a point where weight restrictions are coming very quickly, and in order to repair those, it would be $3,105,000. And category four is just routine maintenance on the remainder of the bridges, just to keep them where they are, and that's $148,450. So as you can see, there's 15 million-plus dollars in needed bridge, county bridge repairs or replacements. And so, you know, we're trying to do our best to cover all bases and cover the needs of everybody, you know, everybody, you know, everybody has needs more than what the financial resources are. We totally understand that, you know, we just hope that, especially the township supervisors understand, the county also has needs much more than our financial commitments are. And, and as Commissioner Zabatowski indicated, you know, the money we're willing to pass out totals $362,500, which is, and if you recall, the proposal that was initiated last month was about $240,000. So this is significantly higher than what was proposed last month, but it helps more people. So, so we would hope that everybody takes that into consideration and understands that, you know, we're trying our best to, to make sure that we hit everybody, and especially the high priority projects that need, need the funding.
And also, again, it goes back to the fact that this is a state law. We would hope that either the legislature and the current governor, or if administrations would change, would go back and revisit this, because this act left a half, about $500 million on the table in Harrisburg. And, you know, it's not the county commissioners that bear the responsibility of allocating these funds to the respective townships either directly or indirectly based on the funds that we derived, you know, the state passed this law, and I urge us all to contact our legislative body, contact the governor, and say, "This just isn't making it." Again, I know that some of you all may not be pleased, but I feel that we've shared some of these revenues. You know, again, the volunteer fire departments are something that I think has been ignored, and this is an opportunity for the county to help them out along the way, especially we're gonna be asking of them in the next couple of years to purchase new radios, to upgrade their technology to fit with the expansion of our 911 system, where the, they're going to have to go to digital radios, and those costs could range from $2,000 to $3,000 to $4,000, depending on the type. So again, this is a proposal that I wanted to bring forth today. It does meet the guidelines under the agenda item, am I correct? Mr. Brookley?
Yes.
It does meet the guidelines under the agenda item?
It does.
And I'll make a motion that we pass the distribution of Act 13 funds for the calendar year of 2013, as I had indicated, 10% to the townships, 4% to the fire, volunteer fire departments, 4% to the Fayette County Airport Authority, 2% to the Fayette Chamber of Commerce, which again is a countywide agency, 1% to the Conneville Chamber, 3% to the Fayette County Redevelopment Authority, and 1% to Fayette County Community Action.
And that's for a total of 25% of the Act 13, 2013 money. Is that your motion?
And that, yeah, my motion, it is, and it is 2013.
I second that motion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any public announcements that anybody has?
No.
Comments?
Comments will come next. Is there any, is there any public announcements? Seeing none, we'll go to the public comments, and appreciate if you can hold those to five minutes, please. State your name, please.
All right, my name is Joe Patrussi. I've been before the commissioners before on this subject, representing the 22 townships that are here. The only two townships. Jim, do you want to do a...
Yeah, I can look.
Roll call, see who we're here to...
Jim Eames, I'm the Warden Township Fayette County. Just to show you, we'll try to keep it a five-minute limit. Quick roll call, we'll do it, I'm gonna do a reverse, I got a list of Warden Township. Wistoun Township. Opel Tyron. Stewart. Springfield. Springfield. South Union. Salt Lake. Redstone.
He was here.
Perry. North Union. Nicholson.
Ah, here.
Minnellin. Luzon.
Here.
Lord Tyron.
Here.
Jefferson.
Here.
Henry Clyde.
Here.
Drummond. Georges.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Dunbar.
Here.
Bullskin.
Here.
Colesville. Brownsville. We got two of them here, we got 22.
They weren't here. Brownsville was here.
Brownsville, yeah. South Union, North Union, we got it right?
These are the townships that'll be interested in the dispersment and receiving money. Quick math here, that's 0.33%, one-third of a percent per township of the total amount of money. Looks like it comes to about $5,500. If you eliminate the township that's not gonna participate, it'll be a little bit higher. My question is, is that, what about the 2012 money? We're gonna be included in that?
No. This was 2013.
So the initial round of money is gone? Does that mean we're not included?
That's correct.
Is there any way we can be included in that? The townships can be?
I think that we've already passed resolutions, if I'm correct, to commit pretty much all of that money.
We had utilized the full amount of our, as you know, we've upgraded our 911 system, which has a debt service of roughly around $8 million, and a repayment schedule, I believe, is it 10 years, Mr. Valley?
$844,000, I was 10 years.
So $844,000, it's my understanding that we have committed the full amount of that first year's payment under Act 13 monies to the Motorola project.
Now, I mean, that money went through the Motorola project, it's actually gonna help the fire departments, too.
It's gonna help everybody in Fayette County.
If someone else wants to chime in here, the townships are responsible for fire protection, we have to, by law, provide fire protection for our townships. And although it's a good gesture on your part to give them 4%, and I don't wanna slight the fire departments, but I think that 4% should be better spent on the townships, because ultimately, we have to provide that fire protection.
Do you buy breathing apparatus equipment for the fire departments?
I think each township varies on what they do for their fire departments. Some townships only have one fire department, in the case of us, and I can only speak for us, yes, we do a lot of stuff like that, if someone would like to add to that.
We provide fuel, we help with fundraisers.
Well, again, this is going to offset some of what they have to do.
What's the county's allocation for liquid fuels towards these bridge projects that you mentioned? And how many of these bridges are actually impacted by the gas drillers that actually use these bridges or probably never meet the weight requirements that these drillers are carrying over these bridges, the figures that you provide? How much money for liquid fuels is being put in there?
I mean, I've looked at this sheet of 13 money that was dispersed, and I see where Union Town, City of Union Town had received 18, no, I'm sorry, yeah, $1853,000.
That's not what I asked you, Vince, I asked you, how much money did you get from liquid fuels?
I can hypothesize on how many of these bridges are directly impacted, but again, this is something that the legislation allows. You ever seen the 2.5, 2.4 million that is broken down based on how many gas wells are within your area? Some townships receive $245,000, some townships are receiving $376,000, other boroughs like Dunbar, we're receiving $2,599. I didn't, I didn't come up with the act, the act was created in Harrisburg.
That's not what I'm asking you, Vince, you're beating around the bush, you know I could give him his lips, sir.
No, I'm giving you facts, I'm giving you facts based on dollars that you've received.
How many bridges are impacted by the Act 13 money that the county maintains? There's probably not too many. Those bridges that you're talking about that need replaced, I came here before, and I said, "Do you have to build a bridge?" A lot of these bridges that the county builds are overkill. I could take you right there between Minnellin and North Union to show you one that was built that's an overkill. You could get away with putting a pipe in there that would suffice and save you thousands, hundreds, thousands of dollars. All you gotta do is have an engineering study on the hydraulics, and somebody that's a little knowledgeable that could do those kind of things, it could save the county hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars.
Bridges are inspected by an engineering firm.
But they never, they'll never meet the requirements that are needed for those Act 13 vehicles.
I mean, there's been cases, and I think our Washington Township supervisors are here, where there was a bridge that was out between Washington Township and Fayette City, and it was owned by PennDOT. We end up securing the bridge because PennDOT's costs were astronomical, if I'm correct, Mrs., Supervisor Miller?
Right.
And the county had came in with its bridge department, did the repairs, and is that bridge operational? And how many of those residents would have been landlocked if it was not for the county intervening? So we do provide assistance to a lot of other variables. In Redstone Township, several years ago, there was, or I'm sorry, Jefferson Township, there was erosion. The county had interceded with providing liquid fuel monies. We, too, have been reduced in our liquid fuel funds by the state. Unfortunately, we're not the state government. We've been impacted by that as well, and I would love to give more out of liquid fuels, I would love to give more out of this, but the bottom line is, we only have so much out there, and we have some obligations that we have to satisfy. I mean, I see where Minnellin Township is receiving 70, what, $71,000?
$72,000.
$72,000.
Now, that $72,000, it'll cost about $90,000 to $100,000 to pave the mile road.
My question then back is, why didn't the state give that in consideration as they were drafting this act? Okay, that's the, that's the problem.
We had very, very, far as I'm concerned, we had very poor representation.
I mean, I understand your frustration, but you're looking at us, we didn't come up with this equation.
We always, the county, we understand stuff is what up. We always receive from the county part of their liquid fuels to help with us to maintain stuff. You made the call out about bridges, John asked a specific question.
I don't know the specific answer.
You know we've got bridges, too. God bless you, God bless the fire department, they need help, too. Like Johnny said, cord rail replacement today, okay, looking at the safety factors, it runs $20 a foot, and they don't wanna do 100 feet at a time, sad to say, but it's running $20 a foot, it's a very toll. A half a mile road, 20 foot wide, okay, only two inches thick, it runs $106,000, okay? Run a half mile, two inches thick. And a skid now is up to $22.75 a ton. Just your ordinary, which the state shoved it down our throat, you might have a few, too, the ordinary stops on, a 30-inch, a 30-inch stops on, okay? Said we have to do that now, is up to $30 a piece. Cutting edges, carbide cutting edges for snowflows, which everybody's running, right? $90 a foot is what they're costing us now. Low on the roadways is running right out to $8,000 per season. Engineer study, if you'd like to see it, which I still don't know that, and I've still been arguing, the townships only get the bond, a road mount for $12,500. PennDOT gets to do a lane mount, okay? And as you see here, $106,000, that's way over the $12,500. We still haven't even got that straight. An engineer study runs $9,500 a mount. I have documentation here, if you'd like to see it.
No, Mr. Beast, I understand, we're both in the same, we're both, with the cuts in the state and the federal budgets, it's all going down here, and it's coming to us and it's coming to you guys.
Correct.
I mean, we've seen it with CYS, unreimbursable matches, in the year 2011, 2012, we had to absorb a $1.2 million loss in these revenue dollars. So again, we're seeing the same thing, and, and, I mean, I know you're here because you're, obviously, you wanna air this out, but I think, in all honesty, we... but I think, in all honesty, we should be airing it out with the folks in Harrisburg and the folks in Washington, D.C., because that's where the problem is starting from.
If I could add this. You know, what you're doing is admirable. I understand, you know, what you're trying to do to help more people. But the impact fee, it's called an impact fee for a reason. It's to make whole those entities that are impacted by the adverse drilling of Marcellus Shell. That's what it's for.
And it's incorporated the county as a part of that?
But, yes, and it has.
Okay, but has... it's incorporated the county for a reason?
Probably the reason, and the reason that I've been told, is because many counties have road systems. The road systems are what is most adversely impacted by drilling. By far, without a question, and I think everybody in this room knows that, including you guys. That's what... I mean, we made a compelling case at other meetings here. And no one disputes what we said because it's all true, but...
But there's no way that our share could ever cover?
And it doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, that's the reality.
It doesn't.
And that's the frustrating thing about it is, I would love to be able to disperse two million dollars if we had it. But the bottom line is, we don't. Now, I would hope that in the near future, decisions are made that would free up some liquid fuel monies, which I would love to get back to the township as it was once in the past. We don't have any liquid fuel. All of our liquid fuel monies are going for operational expense at the Frederick Town Fair.
Let me ask you this. Will this policy... will this be a policy? Will there be county ordinance put in place that guarantees the township's ten percent of the money each year?
Well, at this point, I would like to, you know, I would love to go on perpetuity, but I think because of the concern and some of the questions, if we implement it for 2013, then let's look at how we're doing and how it's being handled, and then we could adjust it accordingly based on revenues increasing or whatever the case may be.
She offered a bill. That's the deal she offered. She's going to give us ten grand for just 2013.
Well, I mean, again, that's my proposal. I mean, we... and as passed. I mean, you may disagree with it, but I think it's a good start.
But what I'm saying, all those other agencies or people that are getting money, you know, they're not impacted. You're going to help them, and this is a wish list, and yeah, you have this money to give them. They're not impacted. We have to... Our job is to make those roads safe, Vince. In order to make those roads safe, we need money. And every little bit of money that we get, every few thousand dollars that we get, helps us make those roads safe so that our school buses and our kids can travel, and our senior citizens can travel. That's what we do as township supervisors, so... And I'm not being disrespectful, but that, all that other money, don't give it to them. Give it to the townships. We know how to spend that money.
I think the Fayette County volunteer fire departments deserve money. I believe... let me finish, please. I believe if you would know the work the Chamber of Commerce has due with the industry that helped stimulate our economy. Ms. Nudelf, you're from the Chamber. Would you like to expand about what you do to try to connect businesses to businesses together to enhance the economy based on this industry?
Absolutely. I think when you look at impact, I don't disagree. I mean, I live in an area that is greatly impacted. And I know, I understand where you're coming from. But impact is a big word, and it's broad. Our job is to connect the business community to the drilling industry. You need the tax dollars that come from the residents and the businesses in your areas in order to keep doing your job. So some of these other organizations, be it a chamber or redevelopment authority, our job is to keep the business community strong and the business community prospering so that we can keep the residents there, we can keep the taxpayers there, and we keep the money coming into your communities. I understand roads are important, but all of us have a job to do in this big picture, and I completely understand that. You need to understand that we are the pieces that help the business generators on the other side. I spend so much of my time simply working with businesses connected to the Marcellus industry, trying to keep business prospering, and I spend a great deal of my time working with the Public Participation Panel, SPC and Transportation. I work with PennDOT on a regular basis. I work with the National Road. I'm on the Tri-County Oil and Gas Expo Committee that looks at trying to train and make sure that our residents and our businesses, our communities, our supervisors, our borough officials all understand what to do. Our emergency officials understand the impact of Marcellus Shell. I don't want to take money out of your...
There is nothing more important than keeping roads, roads safe for people to travel.
But if you don't have the businesses and the residents...
If you don't have roads, you don't have businesses.
But if you don't have businesses and residents, you don't have the tax dollars to do the flows.
But the bottom line is, I think this needs to be addressed before the members of the General Assembly and the governor. I mean, that's the corruption issue is...
All we're doing is, we're just asking for a little bit more money.
And Joe, if the possibility, whatever presents itself, I would try to come through with more money funds for you guys.
Then do this as a resolution today.
We pass the resolution, and we will come back and revisit this. If the county is able to secure liquid fuel monies down the road, I will use them for its intended purposes, which is the townships.
But why can't we make this something in perpetuity today? Something that... we need a plan.
I can answer that question if you allow me. We're not going to make it into perpetuity today simply because I think this is a good plan. I think what Commissioner Zabatowski proposed and we adopted today, I think it's an excellent plan. But I think it's also a work in progress. I think we, you know, it's our responsibility as commissioners to make sure that we spend the money that is allocated to the county in an effective and efficient manner. And if we can see down the road, maybe next year, if there's better ways we can do this, we will. That's our responsibility. Joe, I appreciate your compelling argument here today. I can guarantee you that any one of these organizations listed here could come here and give an identically, identical argument compelling us that they need more money. I mean, you know, I don't think anybody's going to argue that. I appreciate that. I appreciate your comments today, Joe, and we'll see how things go.
Are you allowed to give that money to other people for Act 13?
Yes, yes, we are. It's actually pretty wide range. I mean, it covers, well, it covers capital improvements to county property, repairs, maintenance. It covers a lot of, a lot of things.
Social services. It's very broad. Again, the act itself is very broad in the utilization of the funds. And again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but the bottom line is, they left five-hundred million on the table in Harrisburg. Five-hundred million divided by sixty-seven counties could have gone a long way. I mean, we didn't vote on the legislation. We didn't write the legislation. But the problem is, is we're not getting those monies coming back. And I'll say it, the governor allowed the industry to walk away from their participation in this program. We're the only... most of the states or commonwealths that have gas well drilling have the production fee. We're the only one that has this impact fee. I mean, we're getting shortchanged right out of the gate. I mean, and again, and as much as I appreciate your frustration with roads, appreciate our frustration with the fact that our general fund is getting impacted adversely every day. I spoke with Mr. Lowly's assistant and just today about our CYS outstanding liability. And it's affecting our general fund to the tune of about a million and a half dollars as we speak right now, where we have to pay the bills. So we're paying these contractors, we're paying these folks, and the state's not reimbursing us. I mean, again, as I told one legislator the other day, I said, you know, we're meeting in Harrisburg. We have a meeting scheduled for the middle of April. We're going to go to Harrisburg and speak about the CYS issue and about a couple of other things that are affecting not just the county, but affecting our ability to serve other levels of government. And this was going to be an issue that we wanted to raise. But the bottom line is, until they amend this very bad law, and I think Mr. Mazza said it several months ago, it was a terrible law, you know, our hands are tied. I mean, this is what we get, and this is what, you know, we're trying to start off with something reasonable. Hopefully, we can grow from there. Hopefully, there's some other funding streams coming in the near future. We could work collaboratively to try to help a lot of other folks out, including you guys and ladies.
I can tell you this. I know you gentlemen have a township or a Township Supervisor Association statewide, and obviously, CCAP is a statewide organization. I'm pushing CCAP hard, Vince and I, to modify the Act 13 bill to include a production tax. And I would encourage you gentlemen, through your organization, to encourage that same thing because I think every other state that has a Marcellus Shell-type gas available to them has a production fee. And they're making much more revenue, tax revenue than obviously what Pennsylvania has. So that's really where the emphasis needs to be placed. And I would encourage you gentlemen to do that.
The only thing I'm disappointed in, you know, we asked, when we did, when Attorney Sebick did the resolution for us and we presented it to you, we purposely left blank when we asked for a percentage because we didn't know what you were going to be able to give us. But we did ask for something in perpetuity, and we did that because we need to be able to plan and budget. And I'm disappointed, of course, in this point in the money. I understand where you're coming from. Actually, all this money will help people in the county.
You know, look at this as a short report, please.
I just, okay, I guess we're going to have to, Vince, because you're not going to do this in perpetuity. But it would certainly, it would really help us if we could do that because it would help us plan a little bit. Five thousand, it's like about fifty-five hundred bucks, maybe six thousand a piece. It doesn't sound like much to you, but these guys know how to spend that money, and they'll squeeze that five and make it ten or fifteen. There's a lot you can do with it to make roads safe with that. You can berm roads, you can shoulder roads.
But we still fall short, though. I mean, overall, we need more.
I would ask you to please reconsider and make this a resolution that the townships care about, make it an ordinance that we would get this. To be revisited if you can, but at least make that part of it. That helps make us whole.
I'll work with any way we can, and I would like to think this is a start, not a finish. So let's, you know, pick it up from this point on and see where we can go.
Yeah, like Joe said, if you could, I mean, just to show you, there's twenty-two townships here today. There are two of them that evidently don't need any extra money. That you've seen that by the road call. And I had. Right, right, wrong, they could have been here too.
Can we scratch them off of the master list, thank you?
Since the impact fee, what they did, a lot of the gas companies was working good with the townships. Now, a lot of them have said, hey, we're paying, we're paying, we're paying a tax. Now, we ain't doing this, we ain't doing that. They're getting a paint job. Once again, not chewing, we go back fighting with the state for us trying to get some kind of bond on a road. And sure, you guys know, I give you the figures, the bond don't touch what it costs to do a road.
Also, our CDBG money, because it's sequestered, is note, it's in the Duffmier. We're almost certain it's going to be cut seven to ten percent.
But when you say that, that's because of federal government.
Yeah, what I'm just saying is, there's another thing. That's more money we're not going to have.
And we get hit on that too. I mean, so, I mean, again, we're sharing the same type of ill effects of a federal government and the state government not wanting to help us. And it's just, that's why we got to work together, and hopefully, as I said, it's a start, not an ending.
Will you reconsider and do this in perpetuity?
I will discuss, I will work with you guys any way I can, as I told you from the beginning.
Could we get an answer on that next meeting?
Let me say this.
Either yes or not, so we know.
You give compelling arguments. You stand there and you tell us that you have, you have to plan for the future. You have to, you know, you have to try to nail down some budgeted money so you can use that the best way, the most effectively you can. All you gentlemen do that. But, you know, everything you say, the county has those same obligations. We have to plan for the future. We're, you know, we're getting nailed with, as Commissioner Zabatowski said, you know, a one-point-two million dollar shortfall in CYS. That's the eleven-twelve budget. You know, we spent that money and thought that we were going to get reimbursed, and they come, oh, by the way, you're not going to reimburse them.
So we know what you're telling me.
And, and, Joe, you know, they, at the same time, they say, you have to hire five new caseworkers because of your case load, which is another six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So you combine that with the one-point-two, one-point-three. We're looking at, we're looking at this year potentially a two-million dollar shortfall. Now, Joe, that's an attack right on our general fund. We can't absorb that.
Not to mention our behavioral health.
That's why Commissioner Zabatowski and myself are making the effort to go to Harrisburg, talk to DPW and CYS folks there to try to get this turned around. That, Mr. Zabatowski is exactly right. That's where you have to go make the, that's where you have to go make your effort. That's where the fight is. You don't, you don't come here, you know, I'm going to respectfully, respectfully say that this is not the place to come and fight over breadcrumbs. You have to, you have to go to the root of the problem, you know, the root source, and make your efforts there. That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking you guys to support a production fee and fight for that in Harrisburg.
When are you going to Harrisburg?
The end of the month. I mean, the middle of April, I'm sorry. It was initially for the end of the month, and we had to scrap that.
Well, I haven't, I haven't heard anyone say they got an invitation to go with. Is AJ, you or someone?
Commissioner, you have a great point, and PSAT is 400% towards an impact fee. But I'd like to know, who has a bill out there on the floor that's trying to change it?
Well, that's the problem.
We need to get somebody to introduce that bill.
You have two hundred and three members in the house.
Working with CCAP, PSAT and CCAP work hand in hand.
Yeah.
And I'm on PSAT's executive board. So these guys had a voice at the table when that stuff come down, as CCAP was there. But we both know, and all three of us and forty of us, this was new, we'd have got nothing, or we'd have got this pindling that we got.
It was like we were in denture to take the money or...
And Commissioner, you're 100% right. That should have been a start, but the problem is, and you hit the nail on the head, was our governor would not entertain any kind of production fee. Commissioner, you're 100% correct. There should be. But the only way us as supervisors can get behind something is we need a bill. We need a number, a House bill, a Senate bill to say, yeah, support this to get this accomplished. So if you get somebody that's going to draft one up, please let us know, and I'm sure we'll jump aboard.
We have a track record on the acres.
I had the governor's chief of staff tell me that on the CYS funding, that the General Assembly cut forty million dollars. So the governor's chief of staff shifted the blame on the General Assembly. And my response was, the governor is the same party as both the majority in the House and the Senate. The governor has incredible influence over both those bodies, and they're going to shift the blame, you know, they're going to say that he couldn't do anything? So forty million dollars later, one-point-two million dollars, a loss that Fayette County had to incur, and we're not counting Philadelphia. We still don't know what's out there because Philadelphia has yet to report their fourth quarter. And it's not just CYS. Our MHMR match went up. We had to see, last year, we had to shut down our fact operation from April to July 1 for our shared ride program, which means our dialysis patients, our chemo patients. Fortunately, at the last minute, because of a pressure from CCAP, the state did give us the supplement to continue that transportation. If not, the county was going to be faced with shut it down or tell dialysis patients, you know, get their own ride, or chemo patients. So we're faced with the same issue. What we need to do is to work together because the old adage about something going downhill? Well, guess what? It is. And, you know, we're the last two stops on the governmental ladder.
Yeah, I would like to ask you both a question. We're not supposed to come here for Crohn's. We should have went, which we did.
To the baker.
We got nothing. If we wouldn't have come here for the last six months, and I've been to every meeting, would we have even got that 10%? I'm going to probably answer your question, no.
No, I mean, I, no.
I don't think we would.
Well, we're going to go from here. I mean, I like to think we can grow from this.
Well, I think again, you know... Well, I think again, you know, we understand, you know, where you're coming from. But if you made it permanent, it shouldn't affect you one way or the other. You'll be able to budget and know the 10% of it's coming out and it's going to the townships. You'll know that.
Well, I definitely will consider...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. First of all, Ralph, we could wrap up.
Well, it has to do with what these people are talking about. May I, Joe?
Sure.
I'm confused. And I could, let's get this straight. You say that you're allocating 25% of the monies that the county got for, to Act 13, correct?
Yes.
25% of that, so 25% of 1.4 million is $350,000.
The breakdown was...
350,000. $350,000 is 1/4 of 1,400,000, unless they changed math since I went to school. 10%, 10% of $350,000 is $35,000. A 10% of 35,000 for 24, for 24 townships is not, I don't know where you're...
Or we're not getting the 10% of that?
No, 10%, you're getting 10% of 350,000.
No, they're getting 10% of the 1.4 million.
1.4 million. You're getting 10% of 1.4 million.
Yes.
Well, see, that ain't the way you put it. You put 25% is allocated to the...
No, the total allocation...
Everything else in the county was keeping, was keeping 75%. That's the way it was presented.
The total allocation broken down totals 25%. That would be, been 10% to the townships.
How much is your 25%?
25% is 362,500.
500.
$500. But the 10% is not, is not 10% of the 25%, it's 10% of the 1.4 million.
10% of the 1.4 million.
That's correct.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's a little better.
That's 140 divided 22 ways?
Yeah, $140,000 divided 24.
Well, that's based on the estimate that we have. We don't know if that's going to increase or not, and we don't know what the figure's going to be. We're estimating at 140,000.
What you said was that the county was keeping 75% and you're allocating 25%. That's what you said originally.
Yeah, in this particular...
And I, and that, and that didn't, the math didn't make sense to me, that Joe came up with 5,500, and I wonder how you come up with 5,500, because I come up with 1600.
We wouldn't be here for 1600.
No, it was, it was 10% of the 1, you got it.
Okay, if it's 10% of 1.4 million, that's a little better.
Okay, are there any other, excuse me, public items for public comment?
I had a question about the tax anticipation.
Again, don't forget, you've got that casino money coming too.
Whenever they start rolling the dice.
I mean, you got to look at that.
Hey, Mr. Means, they got...
Thank you, Mr. Means.
Five million dollars.
Oh, I've got a question, I'm sorry, if you would, before we leave. It's the check in the mail.
Well, we got, we don't know when we're going to get 13 money. We have to request from PNC when the date's going to be.
I think we're going to fuck 13 money. I believe we'll find out in June.
Okay.
Are you using any of that tax anticipation money?
Do you get that money even?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we're actually pretty tight right now.
You got 5 million?
5 million.
Yeah, that's what we live on, that's what we live on.
What do you divide by, 20? We usually pay that debt at the end of the year. Do we not want to...
A TAN OUD, which is what it's called, is a tax anticipation OUD. Its sole purpose is to carry county, state, municipal government until whatever is the tax revenue is going.
We got under interest rates, it was a little over 1%.
Like 1.39%. It's almost free money, and without it, we would not be able to operate government, because it is what allows us to have tax generation command, tax revenue generation.
We got it through PNC Bank, and it was, I think, 1.26%.
It was the lowest interest rate I've ever seen.
Yeah, it was...
It stays constant here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
It would be a debt owed, and we usually, yeah, because we don't get our tax revenue, they just mailed out the slips March 1, so the tax revenue doesn't start coming in until, you know, March, April, May. That's when we start seeing revenue coming in.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
I think you need to go on a budget and quit spending money that you don't have.
Well, we are on a budget.
Well, it's not working very well.
Okay, I think it's working pretty well, actually.
I'd like to know where your tree is, so I can go visit it.
Thank you, Jay. Are there any other public comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
Second, Aldous, favor.